Twenty-five regular council meeting to order. We're going to begin with the oath of office for Maria Manarino.
Hi.
Do I have to come up front, please?
Do I have to come up front? Oh, I didn't dress appropriately. I thought I would be back here. Nobody's going to see me anyway. You're fine.
Good wonderful evening to you, right?
Thank you.
We meet again. So just give me to repeat after me, please, and you know what we're doing here. I'm Maria Manarino Thompson.
Do I?
Yes.
Right hand.
Right hand.
I'm Maria Manarino Thompson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
Affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
Uphold all federal laws.
Uphold all federal laws.
State laws.
State laws.
And the ordinances of the city.
And the ordinances of the city.
Of Lathir Village.
Of Lathir Village.
And I will discharge my duties.
And I will discharge my duties.
As a city council member.
Of city council member.
For the city of Lathir Village, Michigan.
For the city of Lathir Village, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
And we sign. Congratulations, Maria. And I'll sign, and congratulations.
There's too many. Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Manarino Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Hammond.
Here.
Mayor Protem Cantor.
Here.
Mayor Garrett.
She will be joining us in a little bit.
Do we need to make a motion to temporarily?
She'll be back. All right, everyone to join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll take a motion to approve or modify the agenda.
I'll make a motion to modify the agenda. 我对 agenda by pulling the regular meeting minutes of the May nineteenth regular meeting.
That will be in the consent agenda. My bad, I gave you that information.
Consent, no.
That'll be the consent agenda. Worked on a regular agenda, so just the temporary sign ordinance.
Okay. So, right, so I'll amend the agenda by adding item eight J to include a resolution. Resolution for temporary sign ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is seconded, any discussion?
Were we supposed to add the detail of the resolution southbound?
No, we'll do that in the motion.
Okay.
All right, no more discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hammond.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Manarino Thompson.
Yes.
Motion passed. We'll move on to presentations. The first is proclamation for Juneteenth, 2025. Okay, so it was one of these. Okay, proclamation declaring June nineteenth, 2025 as Juneteenth Awareness Day. Whereas Juneteenth observed on June nineteenth commemorates the day in eighteen sixty-five when Union General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas and informed enslaved African-Americans that the Civil War had ended and they were free more than two years after President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas Juneteenth is nationally celebrated commemoration of the ending of slavery in the United States, representing a significant moment in American history and a powerful reminder of the ongoing journey towards justice, equity, and freedom for all people. And whereas June nineteenth is a time to reflect on the struggles and the resilience of African-Americans throughout our nation's history, to honor the contributions of Black individuals to our society, culture, and democracy, and to recommit ourselves to the ongoing work of eliminating racial disparities and building a more just and inclusive community. And whereas the city of Lathir Village recognizes the importance of promoting awareness, education, and understanding of the historical significance of Juneteenth and affirms its commitment to standing in solidarity with our diverse community in the pursuit of racial equity and social justice. Now, therefore, I, Bruce Cantor, Mayor Protem of the city of Lathir Village, on behalf of the city council and our residents, do hereby proclaim June nineteenth, 2025 as Juneteenth Awareness Day in the city of Lathir Village, Michigan, and encourage all citizens to learn more about the history and legacy of Juneteenth, to honor the ongoing contributions of African-Americans to our community and our nation, and to join in activities and conversations that promote equality, understanding, and unity. In witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Lathir Village to be affixed this nineteenth day of June, 2025.
It's also my anniversary.
Next is proclamation for Pride Month, 2025. For Pride Month, 2025. So proclamation declaring June, 2025, as Pride Month. Whereas the city of Lathir Village is a welcoming and inclusive community that celebrates diversity and values the dignity and worth of all people regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. And whereas Pride Month is celebrated each year in June to honor the nineteen sixty-nine Stonewall uprising in New York City, a pivotal event in the LGBTQ+ rights movement, and to recognize the ongoing struggle for equality, justice, and inclusion. And whereas Lathir Village acknowledges the invaluable contributions of LGBTQ+ individuals to our city's culture, economy, public service, and civic life. And whereas this month serves as an important reminder that the fight for equal rights is not over and that continued education, awareness, and action are essential in advancing equity and inclusion for all members of the LGBT community. And whereas Lathir Village is committed to fostering a safe, supportive, and respectful environment where all residents regardless of identity are free to live authentically and without fear of discrimination or bias. And whereas Pride Month provides an opportunity for residents to reflect on the progress that has been made, celebrate the diversity of our community, and stand in solidarity with LGBTQ+ individuals and allies. Now, therefore, be proclaimed that I, Bruce Cantor, Mayor Protem of the city of Lathir Village, on behalf of the city council and the residents of our community, do hereby declare June, 2025 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in the city of Lathir Village, and encourage all residents, businesses, and organizations to recognize and support this observance with appropriate programs, activities, and reflection. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Lathir Village to be affixed this sixteenth day of June, 2025. And one more. This is a proclamation in appreciation of the Lathir Village Tree Committee and volunteers. Whereas trees provide countless benefits to our environment, community, and quality of life by improving air-water quality. I'm sorry, by improving. Start that again. Whereas trees provide countless benefits to our environment, community, and quality of life by improving air qual- air. Take it over that. Improving air and water quality, reducing urban heat, increasing property values, and enhancing the natural beauty of our neighborhoods. And whereas the city of Lathir Village was the proud recipient of funding through the DTE Energy Foundation Tree Planting Grant Program. And whereas during the first weekend of June, 2025, the city undertook a large-scale tree planting effort to increase the community's tree canopy, improve environmental sustainability, and support long-term urban forestry goals. And whereas the Lathir Village Tree Committee, in partnership with dedicated volunteers from across the community, gave their time, energy, and expertise to help plant mulch and water dozens of new trees into the public spaces throughout the community. And whereas their teamwork, commitment to service, and love of nature exemplify the spirit of Lathir Village and serve as an inspiring example of community-led environmental stewardship. Now, therefore, I, Bruce Cantor, Mayor Protem of the city of Lathir Village, on behalf of the city council and our grateful residents, do hereby recognize and extend heartfelt appreciation to the Lathir Village Tree Committee and all volunteers for their outstanding contribution during the DTE tree planting event. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Lathir Village to be affixed this sixteenth day of June, 2025.
Okay, consent agenda. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the.
Hang on, public comment for items on the agenda first.
Oh, I missed item six, I apologize.
So now I'll open it up for public comment. This is specifically for items that are on the agenda tonight. Public commentators will have three minutes, which Mike will. Austin will hold time. So if anybody would like to come up to the microphone, please do so now.
Good evening again. Tim Hillman, San Quentin Boulevard. I'm going to speak personally for a second here. I grew up in Madison Heights, very close to a second-run movie theater, which had a reputation. My older brother used to warn me about the gay men who frequented it. He told me they filled syringes with their blood, embedded them in the movie theater seats, and waited for innocent moviegoers to infect themselves with HIV. Of course, none of that was true. But this was the early nineties, and that was all I knew about gay people. That they were deviant, that they were diseased, and that they were dropping dead. Quietly, I also knew I was one of them. It takes a long time to recover from that type of shame, but eventually I found pride in older gay people who lived out in Proud ahead of me, in the culture, in my Lutheran church, and sometimes even in my government. I lived in Ferndale for a long time, and it's very hard to escape pride in that city. I'm also happy to report that my city of origin, Madison Heights, the very place I learned to be ashamed of myself, recognized pride for the first time in 2018. They've been displaying a flag and hosting a pride festival ever since. So I'm thrilled that, for the first time in history, this council has properly and officially recognized Pride Month and also Juneteenth, which I know is not the same thing, but I'm happy to see that was part of the proclamations as well. So I appreciate your consideration, and I know many of my other fellow residents do as well. So thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Cheryl Tipton. I'm the community rep for Congresswoman Tlaib. Bring you greetings from the Congresswoman. And coming here tonight to invite you to a Teletown Hall, which will be held this Wednesday, June eighteenth at 6:00 P.M. If anyone needs the information, I can share it with you. I encourage you to call in. There's a lot going on, I don't have to tell you that. But I encourage you to call in. You may be one of the participants whose question goes live with Congresswoman Tlaib. But we promise everybody that does call, that leaves a concern, or has an issue, we do get back with you within forty-eight hours. So this is your opportunity to hear directly from her. We do have an office in Southfield that's open on Tuesdays and Thursdays from nine to four. It's at two-six-zero-eight-zero Berg Road and Civic Center Drive. We encourage you to call, come by, schedule an appointment. We want to hear from you. The Congresswoman is open to the constituents. We want to know what your concerns are because she will address them, trust me. So with that being said, just wanted, I just came by to ask you to participate in this Teletown Hall. You don't have to leave home, of course. It's by telephone, and the number is included. Does anybody need this? Anybody?
I would like one, please.
Thank you.
Would you like one?
Some of the audience here would like it. Picture. Little one in the audience, say anything. Okay, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you and for being here on the town hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Garrett Harris, Cambridge Boulevard. I appreciate the three proclamations. They were all completely different. They're all important, and I appreciate you felt they were important as well. So we're the benefit of that. I would like to extend the conversation about the flags. I would still like to see us flying flags, the pride flag, and I would also like to see the Juneteenth flag. But the pride flag, I'll just leave it at that. I would like to see them flying here at City Hall. I'd also like to address the pilot that you'll be talking about. I have been really excited about this apartment complex going in and the fact that our school will be cleaned up and we're going to have some beauty in our city in that area that's not been beautiful for years and years, probably since I've lived here. I feel strongly that we need to meet Cernow halfway, partway, so we can make this happen. We need to work with them. And if it means pilot, then it's pilot. Whatever we have to do to get this off the ground, because I believe it's still a win-win for us all the way around. So I do support pilot. Thank you.
Pilot proposal. In my opinion, this is not a good economic sense to raise property taxes on a residence eleven percent, generating approximately $380,000, and then give a developer over an approximate subsidy of $100,000. If this project is viable, then it doesn't need a subsidy. If it needs a subsidy, if it's not viable, then it should be canceled. Thank you.
Lauren Barris, Golden Gate. I have a lot to talk about, so I wrote it down if you don't mind. Tonight I want to speak about pride, you know, pride in our city and in our community and the positive steps that we're taking together. We planted fifty trees about ten days ago, and with the help of a DTE grant and our dedicated Parks and Rec, the DDA, and the Tree Committee, to see the volunteers of all ages coming together, including Rashida Tlaib, by the way, in case anyone didn't know, she was there planting trees as well, is proof that Lathir Village is powered by care and connection. That's why I believe the city should reflect its values clearly by flying both a pride flag and a Juneteenth flag at City Hall. These symbols matter. They reflect our diversity, our inclusivity, and the simple, powerful truth that everyone belongs. Raising those flags even during the commemorative months would speak volumes about who we are. But we also need to take pride in how we communicate, especially during public meetings. It's discouraging to see how often these sessions are disrupted by hostility, misinformation, or personal attacks. People are being harassed simply for thinking differently. We've seen mocking, yelling, and a pattern of behavior that doesn't invite conversation that shuts it down. Let's be clear, we elected council members to make decisions. That's democracy. We can all have opinions, but we must express them with civility and facts. Take, for example, the pilot agreement recently discussed for the old Annie Lathrop School redevelopment by the Cernow Company. This agreement, a payment in lieu of taxes, isn't unusual. It's a standard tool used across Michigan to support development that brings value to a community. And in our case, it happens within the DDA district, which means the DDA, and by the extension, the community, stands to benefit. Is it complex? Sure. That's why a Community 101 on what the pilot agreement is would really be a great idea. And I know that this was brought up before. But let's not confuse unfamiliar with bad. Those are not the, these are not backroom deals. They're standard economic tools, and they are typically subject to, and they're not typically subject to public vote. That's why you elected these officials here to manage. After all, you voted for them to lead. What's not productive is the cycle, constant cycle of negativity, often based on half-truths that some bring to every meeting. It's disheartening to hear the same few folks criticizing everything the city tries to do, yet never offer a solution or show up to help as volunteering for events. It's easy to post a rant. It's harder and more meaningful to roll up your sleeves and be part of the process and progress. Let's lift each other up. Let's raise flags that reflect who we are. Let's give our council space to lead, and let's make these meetings a place where every resident, every voice feels safe and heard and respected. Thank you.
Samantha Davis, California Drive Northeast. I'm just going to read the email that I sent to council today. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of myself and my wife Gabrielle, who couldn't be here. We wanted to express our support for the two proclamations, June nineteenth as Juneteenth Awareness Day, and the month of June as Pride Month. These initiatives affirm the diversity that defines our community and reinforce the inclusive and welcoming environment that we strive to create for all residents and visitors. The proclamation of June nineteenth as Juneteenth Awareness Day holds profound significance. Juneteenth commemorates the emancipation of enslaved African-Americans in the United States, marking a pivotal moment in our nation's history and a vital step towards Black liberation. Recognizing this day as an acknowledgement of the enduring struggles and triumphs of the Black community, serving as a powerful reminder of the ongoing journey towards justice and equity despite the systemic oppression and historical injustices meant to deny it. Formally recognizing Pride Month alongside the symbolic act of flying the LGBTQIA+ or pride flag at City Hall conveys a powerful and unmistakable message. It publicly affirms our city's commitment to equality and acceptance, ensuring that everyone who enters our village or drives through it recognizes our collective sentiment of welcome and belonging. These celebrations of our community's diversity are particularly meaningful when considering Lathir Village's history. At its founding, the village's ordinances included racial and ethnic restrictions that fostered residential segregation, clearly defining who was and was not welcome. By now embracing the LGBTQIA+ community and formally acknowledging Juneteenth as a testament to Black liberation, we demonstrate progress. These commitments highlight our dedication to building a truly equitable future for all, moving away from a past of exclusion. Proclaiming June nineteenth as Juneteenth Awareness Day and June as Pride Month honors our Black and LGBTQIA+ residents and strengthens the social fabric of Lathir Village. Thank you.
Good evening, city council members, Mayor Protem.
Mayor Kelly, if she's here somewhere.
And fellow citizens of LV. My name is Brian Sherman from San Quentin Drive. I moved to LV about four and a half years ago. I'm non-binary and queer and never felt a sense of community until I moved here. I'd lived in Rochester for fifteen years, and people would ask me after I moved here how I liked it and how is the new neighborhood. I'd always smile and say I've had more people wave at me, say hello to me, stop and talk to me about my dogs while out walking in the first two weeks living here than in the entire fifteen years in Rochester. I'm here tonight to ask the council to consider flying the pride flag during the month of June. Some people think Pride Month is a celebration of being LGBT plus. It is not. Pride is a celebration of life in honor of those who struggled and fought so we could exist, so we could be at events without police harassment, so we could love who we love and marry them like any other person. The rainbow flag is a symbol of hope, of perseverance, and of acceptance. We are all many colors, many flavors, under one banner. In this time of reality being erased and whitewashed, it is important to show we exist and we are accepted here. Visibility is important, not just for us, who have lived through harder times for the LGBT community, but to show younger people who are coming into their own that everyone is loved and welcome here. I hope this council will reflect on our words tonight and agree to fly the flag to show all our welcome in LV and all our love in LV. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and council members. My name is Andrea Bouchard from Wiltshire. I'm here tonight to ask that any ordinance allowing pilot agreements, payments in lieu of taxes, be placed on the ballot for a vote of the people. Why? Because this decision has long-term financial implications for our city, and the public deserves a direct say in whether we allow developers to pay significantly reduced taxes. You've told us repeatedly that the city has a revenue problem. You've already passed a special assessment for public safety, and you're preparing to ask voters for a headly override this fall, which, if approved, would raise taxes on residents. At that same time, this ordinance would allow the city to negotiate away tax revenue from large developments, not just for a year or two, but potentially for decades. Yes, I understand that revenue from a pilot agreement would be more than the $22,000 the city is currently receiving, but it could conservatively be estimated to be at least seventy percent less than what the property would generate under standard taxation. That small increase would barely be enough to fund even one additional police officer while the city continues to ask residents to contribute more. So my question is simple. Why are residents being asked to pay more while developers are being given a path to pay less? This is not a routine administrative decision. It sets a precedent that will shape the city's financial future and tax structure for years to come. If you're confident it's the right choice, let the voters decide. Let us vote. Let us weigh the cost. Let us decide whether we're willing to subsidize private development while being asked to pay more out of our own pockets. Thank you.
Carol Green, Lathir Boulevard. Regarding the pilot program, I have some questions, and I know they aren't going to be answered right now at this time, but I hope at some point they can be. I'm noticing in the ordinance draft that there is a mention of the upper limit of income for people to qualify, but there is no lower limit. Initially, we were told the income range to qualify would be, excuse me, sixty to one-hundred-twenty percent of the average median income. I took that to mean that it was based on average median income for Lathir Village. Now I'm hearing and reading references that it applies to the area median income as defined by HUD, which is lower than the average median income for Lathir Village. In the past, well, over and over again, we've been told that this development is for middle-income housing or workforce housing. Mr. Cernow's presentation included a list of occupations, professional in nature, that would typically fall into that income category. Some residents have been chastised for referring to this development as being low-income housing. The omission of a lower income range in the ordinance begs the question of what the income requirements are for this project, or if there would be any other financing or programs being used in the development. In February twenty-four, Mr. Cantor reported that the previous year's audit revealed an unexpected $659,000 reduction to the city's general fund. Since then, we've heard time and time again that we have a revenue problem. The proposed answer to that problem has been suggested as twofold. Firstly, using the PA thirty-three to assess a two-mil increase in taxes to all the residents. This assessment was recently approved and I believe will appear on our summer tax bill. Secondly, asking voters to pass a headly override in November election. Each of these actions puts the burden on the taxpayers. In the meantime, approving an ordinance that would likely decrease the amount of revenue as opposed to a traditional taxes that could be collected from the development. So my questions are this. Why has the lower limit been omitted from the ordinance draft? Will the payments made to the city in lieu of taxes be based on the occupancy rate of units? Would the rate of these payments be negotiated separate from the adoption of the ordinance? Is there a forecast of what the payments would bring to the city? And do we know how much revenue would be generated by property tax if the development were to proceed with traditional financing? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Diane Anderson, and I want to talk about the U.S. Constitution tonight, as I endorse the two proclamations. In terms of the Pride one, I'd point out that LGBTQ rights are 14th Amendment of the Constitution rights, the Civil War Amendment, equal treatment for all. It doesn't provide us with any difficulty that others might want to come in and say, "Give it to us too." This is very much a 14th Amendment issue, and I could not support it more, particularly given the number of gay friends I lost in the early 90s, and I know how deeply affected the community has been until recently, when they were fully recognized. The other one I want to talk about is Juneteenth, and I don't mean to seem critical of the idea of Juneteenth, but I am worried about the wording. You might have noticed we have somebody in the White House these days who lies through his teeth every time he mentions something about the Constitution. And one of the things that worries me about Juneteenth, Dr. King's my hero, I went on my first protest march the day they assassinated him, I've got three six-foot bookcases of black history, I teach black history, I do showcases at Southfield, I'm not hostile to the concept, but I'm worried about the wording of Juneteenth. Not a single slave was freed on Juneteenth, nor was anyone freed by the Emancipation Proclamation. Slavery's in the Constitution, twice in Article I, three-fifths of a person, and abolition of the slave trade in 1808. It's in Article IV, the Fugitive Slave Act, which then becomes the Fugitive Slave Act of 1792. To get rid of it, you have to have a constitutional amendment. Lincoln knew that, and that's why in December of 1864, he got the Senate to pass the 13th Amendment, and if you saw the movie about Lincoln, that's getting it through the House in January of 1865. But it didn't get through the states until the 18th of December is when Seward signed off on it, and that's when slaves were freed. Until then, they were not legally freed. So by all means, support the spirit of Juneteenth. But I've been in politics for 50 years, and I know if you use the wrong terminology, your opponents are going to come at you. They'll get you for the wording, not for what you're saying or the sentiment. So I'm just hoping that when people talk about Juneteenth, they talk about the spirit, but they don't make the mistake of saying that people were freed on Juneteenth, because they weren't. Instead, talk about liberation in the sense that the war was over, that there wasn't anybody at that stage trying to lock you up again, but the danger was until the 13th Amendment, they could have. They took back the land that was the 40 acres and a mule, and there were real concerns that there might be attempts to at least abduct some of the freed people and get them out of the country and send them to the Caribbean and to Brazil, which were the two big slave countries. So it's hard to overstate the importance of the 13th Amendment and celebrate Juneteenth, but within the context of the 13th Amendment.
What else?
We have a lot of emails to read.
Well, for, do you have them? Because I don't. Kelly was going to, we're reading the ones that specifically, specifically asked to be read.
Yes. Well, I have the document that Mike sent us, that is a Word document that has emails.
Oh, I didn't see that one, but yeah.
So is that, Mike, do you know if that's the list of emails that were intended to be read for public comment?
No, that's all I had.
Okay. Well, I'm happy to read them, since I have them in front of me.
Go for it.
And then I have one that wasn't on the list that was sent to me that they asked me to read. Okay, so this is a email from, Kelly, we're just getting ready to read the emails for public comment. Do you want me to carry on, or would you like to read?
The emails, I thought public comment was for just things that were on the agenda now.
Yeah, so these are all about Pride Month.
Which was the proclamation.
Oh, okay.
Should I carry on, or you want to?
No, go ahead.
Okay. So there's an email from Sandra Johnson. Greetings, I'm requesting and would appreciate any of you reading my email at the City Council meeting on June 16th. I am in total support of our fine village adopting a formal annual proclamation and recognition of June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in Lathrop Village. Let's also have a Pride Flag outside of City Hall in at least June and possibly year round. While Louise Lathrop may be turning in her grave with all the fabulous diversity that now makes up our village, let us all recognize our evolution as a city that has moved beyond stereotypes, beyond repression of anyone while welcoming all. I hope you hear the chorus of voices who support Pride Month and want Lathrop to join in. I am eager for this proclamation. Next one is from Karen. Do you want me to read your email, or, okay. Karen Harris wrote us an email, but she already spoke. The next one is from Dane Johnson, who's in the audience. Do you want me to read your email, Dane? To members of the Lathrop Village City Council, I am writing on behalf of myself and other Lathrop Village residents who are members of the LGBTQ plus community, as well as our allies who care about equity and inclusion in Lathrop and the wider community. These are challenging times for the LGBTQ plus community. We are being vilified by politicians who seek to demean us and deny us equal rights as Americans. Pride Month is a chance to celebrate our community, but also speak to those who would seek to deny us rights afforded to other Americans and demean our significant contributions to history and culture. In this context, I'm requesting that at the June 16th meeting of the City Council, the council join many of our neighboring communities and adopt a formal annual proclamation recognizing June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in Lathrop Village. Further, I am requesting that the city display a Pride Flag in front of City Hall this year and in years to come during June. This flag has become a global symbol of inclusion and support, and has particular power in parts of the world where LGBTQ plus persons live in fear for their lives if they express their true selves. Even in this country, those who are struggling to come out can find comfort in the image of the flag, the sense that those flying it support them, and that anywhere the flag flies is a safe place. Raising the flag would affirm to Lathrop Village residents and those who visit that we are a community that welcomes everyone regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. Lathrop Village residents have worked hard for decades to build a community that is diverse and welcoming. I hope that the City Council will support this public demonstration of that fact by supporting the LGBTQ plus community through these actions. Please consider this as a public comment to be read at the June 16th meeting. Thank you for your consideration of these requests. The next one's from Tim Hillman, who already spoke. Good, okay. The next one is from Christina Schindler. I think she left the meeting, okay. Dear City Council, I am writing to implore you to adopt an official resolution declaring June as Pride Month and to display a flag outside of City Hall. I believe our village to be inclusive and welcoming, so this would send the appropriate message to the residents and neighboring communities that our village is a safe place for all, no matter sexual orientation or gender identity. Next one is from Nancy Pouchard. Dear Mayor Garrett and City Council, as always, thank you for the good work you do for our city. It is deeply appreciated, and I am so pleased to see the grand initiatives taking place on a regular basis. Your efforts continue to make Lathrop Village an excellent place to live. You all should be very proud. Part of the beauty of this city is welcoming and recognizing the value of a diverse community. As such, I respectfully request that council adopt a formal annual proclamation recognizing June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month in Lathrop Village. I would love to see a Pride Flag flown at City Hall during June in acknowledgement and celebration of Pride Month. Thank you for your consideration of this request. Next one is from Cora Morgan. Mayor Garrett, attached please find my statement in support of a formal proclamation designating June as Pride Month. Please read this during the next council meeting. My name is Cora Morgan, and I live on Sunnybrook Avenue. I'm writing to express my support for the city adopting a formal annual proclamation recognizing June as LGBTQ plus Pride Month. To that end, I also support displaying a Pride Flag outside of City Hall during the month of June each year as a symbol of inclusion and support for the LGBTQ plus community. The city formally recognizing Pride Month would have the effect of condemning the recent rise in anti-LGBTQ plus policies, laws, and court decisions throughout our country. By making a formal proclamation, the city would let its LGBTQ plus residents know that it recognizes, supports, and champions their rights. Lathrop is known for its diversity. I urge council to recognize and embrace that diversity and formally proclaim June as Pride Month. The next one's from Samantha Davis, who spoke and already read this exact email. And then there's an email from Nathan Feder, who is the manager of constituent services and scheduling for State Representative Hoskins. But the content isn't in here, so I'm not sure what the, the communication was.
Oh, it was a forwarded email, that's already in this list.
Okay, we already, I already read it then? Okay, so I think it just goes to, just to say that Representative Hoskins received communication about this topic and sent it our way. And then finally, at the beginning of the study session, I received an email which I was asked to read. Dear Councilmember Hammond, oh, sorry, this is from Christopher Pomeroy. Dear Councilmember Hammond, I hope this message finds you well. I am writing as a resident of Lathrop Village to respectfully request that the City Council formally recognize June as Pride Month in our community. Pride Month is an important opportunity to honor the contributions, resilience, and diversity of our LGBTQ plus neighbors, friends, and family members. A proclamation or formal acknowledgement by the council would affirm our city's commitment to inclusivity, equality, and support for all residents. I believe such recognition would send a positive message that Lathrop Village values diversity and stands in solidarity with those who have historically faced discrimination and marginalization. It would also help foster a more welcoming and inclusive environment for everyone. Thank you for considering this request. I would be happy to provide any additional information or assist in any way to help make this possible. And then, we have other emails, but they weren't included in the packets, I'm not sure if they're intended to be read.
We have another one, it was, "Good afternoon, Kelly and council members. I'm writing in support of Lathrop Village City Council declaring June as Pride Month. When my husband Duncan and I chose Lathrop in 1987, the reasons included its diversity of housing, of street layout, but especially because it wasn't just another white suburb. We wanted our neighbors to be, I'm sorry, wanted our neighbors to more directly represent in all ways what we experienced in the greater Detroit area. We are proud to call Lathrop Village our home and are thankful for our ability to grow with our community as it continues to identify as a place where all are welcome. A statement by the council along the lines of Oakland County's declaration supporting Pride Month would be a visible reminder to everyone. While I don't expect an answer to my email, I ask that if possible, it be read into the minutes during the public comment. Mary Beth Jones."
I think that is all that I received.
There were some additional letters that had to do with other issues, the pilot program?
Yeah. I have that one.
The pilot program, thank you, yes, there was a couple of those.
She, Andrea already spoke?
She asked, so you don't need me to, who is she?
I mean, that was a little bit different. You can read it.
This is a chain, that's why I was giving it a minute, so this is on the, okay, here it is. Mayor Garrett, good morning. Specific questions from my email that I would like for you to address are, one, why has there not been a town hall specifically for the Sernow project like you promised? The site plan has now been approved for months, the pilot ordinance change is being introduced this evening, which is the last and final step that the city has control over, and yet there has not been a town hall. You stated several times at the January council meeting that once the time was appropriate, there would be a town hall and Sernow would be there. I would like to add that the appropriate time for a town hall is not once everything has been approved to simply inform residents, but the proper time for a town hall is before everything has been approved to receive input from the residents. Two, as mayor of our city and as a representation of all the residents, I would like to request that you personally initiate the pilot ordinance change, be put on the ballot. Are you able to commit to putting this on the ballot in the fall? If not, why not? You want me to answer it now? First one, there was, there was a town hall. It just was not specified for, it was, what is it?
The political business town hall.
It's just, I'm just going to answer it, okay. So that was a business town hall. I apologize that the wording was not to everyone's liking, but it was a town hall, and that's something that we did discuss to have a town hall, and that was satisfying. However, because of the outpour about this, and I can't promise you Sernow will be here. That's not, I can't promise that, they can ask.
You did promise that.
Well, I can't promise that, and I'm my mistake. I'm sorry. I, my mistake, I cannot promise for someone else, I can't control what other people do. We are having a town hall.
Sorry.
No, it's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's just the heat. Yeah, it is hot.
Town hall.
Yep, so we're looking to host a pilot town hall next Monday. We're looking to bring in outside party to come give a background on what a pilot is, the benefits of it, and some of the other attributes to it. We will finalize the time tomorrow afternoon when we meet individual. This person is recommended to us by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, so once we do finalize the time tomorrow, we will start advertising it.
So there is a town hall coming up. Again, I cannot promise that Sernow will be here. I think, and I understand why they won't be, because they don't want to be attacked, of course, and be asked questions, of course, but attacked, talked about their father and stuff like that, that, that was the reason he told me that he kind of shies away from coming here because of that. But I will ask him to be there. And then just to make it very clear for tonight, this pilot ordinance is a ordinance, is not for Sernow per se, it's an ordinance. So it's not approving anything for Sernow, that's a whole nother thing.
But in order for Sernow to go through, this has to be approved.
True, but you still have to come in front of the council, still have to come in and get it approved that way. So it does, there is a process with this, so we get to that towards the end. There was another letter from Matthew, I'm going to destroy your last name, Lenhart. Oppose pilot agreement, let the public vote, oh, that's the other thing, yes, about me initiating ballot. The way that our council is set up, I have no more authority than the rest of them on here. So asking me to put something on a ballot, it'll never happen, because they all have to agree with it.
Wait a minute, I missed you, you guys voted.
Okay, I, I get it, but I'm just explaining, so the answer is no. I won't personally do it, because there's no, they, all of council has to agree to put it on the ballot, and we, we, well, we'll get into that at the end, but the answer is no, because we would have to vote on it as a council.
That's what I meant, I meant initially me voting on, that's what I meant, didn't mean you personally.
Well, you said personally me, so that's what I'm just saying, I'm just answering your questions as to what the email was. Next one, I'm sorry, going back to Matt, Matthew. Dear members, members of the City Council, I, Matthew Lenhart, am writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed payment in lieu of taxes agreement, pilot, for the Sernow company, and to demand that this decision be placed on the ballot for a public vote. Our community is already drowning in tax bills. Every year, the cost of living in Lathrop Village increases, while essential services are stretched thin. Homeowners, renters, and small businesses alike are shouldering more than their fair share of the burden. Meanwhile, developers are asking for massive tax breaks to boost, boost their profits. This is not only unfair, it is unsustainable. A pilot agreement would divert desperately needed tax revenue away from, from schools, emergency services, public works, and the very infrastructure developers will rely on. These are our shared investments. Residents shouldn't have to pay more while well-funded private developers pay less. Decisions on this, of this magnitude must not be made without public input. If the council truly believes the pilot agreement is in the best interests of our city, then you should have no hesitation putting it up to a vote. Let the people who will bear the financial consequences have a direct say. I urge you to do the right thing, deny the current pilot proposal, and commit to transparency by placing the issue on the ballot, give your constituents a chance to weigh in on what kind of future we are building and who should pay for it. Sincerely, Matthew Lenhart, on behalf of myself and other concerned residents of Lathrop Village. Did you read a letter from Sandy Behrs?
Yes, Sandy Johnson.
No, Behrs.
Oh, I did not read the one from Sandy Behrs, because it wasn't there, they didn't track the list to read.
Dear Mayor Garrett, Pro-Tom, Mayor Cantor, and members of Lathrop Village City Council, my name is Sandy Behrs, and I write you today with a feeling of pride, of pride in being a resident of Lathrop Village, of pride in owning and caring for the first, for one of the first homes built 100 years ago this year, of pride in living in the friendliest and most diverse community I've ever reside, I've ever reside, of pride in living in a community where once in 1970, my mother and I were told by a neighbor mowing his grass next to an open house for the home we were looking at, that it was still true, that Jewish people were still not welcome in Lathrop Village. We didn't ask if gay people were welcome, because back then, I didn't have enough pride in myself to share with my family and friends that I was gay. Once I did come out in 1978, I became quite the activist and am, am quite proud of my involvement and achievements in the community, standing up and speaking out for the pride that for so long had eluded me and millions of others. When I first moved into my buggaloo drive home in July of 2021, I considered putting up a Pride Flag, but thought, my activist days are over, people are accepting, the world has changed. It's not necessarily to wave my own flag. However, unfortunately, the world has indeed changed, and it's time to regain the pride that too many have taken, are taking, and continue to try, try in so many ways. that too many have taken, are taking, and continue to try, try in so many ways to take away. The beginning of June, as I was not home, at my request, several wonderful neighbors erected a pride flag on my property and have thoughtfully placed a couple of benches next to it for anyone strolling by to come and sit a spell and feel completely welcome, feeling welcome. It is so important to send a message to symbolize not only to the diverse residents of Lathir, but to the thousands of people that drive through our city, that we are an awesome community to live in, and it's with pride that I ask to each of you to officially recognize June as Pride Month and fly a pride flag at city hall commemorating it. I, and I, along with others, are happy to donate the flag and cover any associated expenses. Thanks to each of you for your endless support of Lathir Village, Sandy Behrs. Thank you.
Uh, there was one on June 8th from Bill Leonis.
From June 8th?
June 8th.
I don't have anything from June 8th.
I have it up, if you'd like.
Go ahead.
Uh, dear, this is from Bill Leon, I hope I'm pronouncing his last name right, Bill Leonis, and Michael Lukox. Dear Lathir Village City Council, as proud taxpaying residents of Lathir Village, for the past five years, we are writing to respectfully request that the city fly a pride, pride flag during the month of June in recognition of Pride Month. One of the things we love most about living in Lathir is how deeply our community reflects the values of inclusion, kindness, and respect. These values aren't just words or on signs, they are lived out through the welcoming spirit of our neighbors, the diversity of our community, and the commitment to making this a place where all feel safe and seen. Flying the pride flag would be a meaningful gesture to the sizable LGBTQIA+ population here in our village, as well as the many allies who live, work, and raise families alongside us. At a time when too many places are turning their backs on the LGBTQIA+ community, Lathir Village has an opportunity to make it clear that we stand for dignity, equality, and love. This simple act would send a powerful message that in our city, everyone belongs. Thank you for considering this request. I'd be happy to speak further or support this effort in any way needed. Thank you for all you do to make our neighborhood thrive. It doesn't go unnoticed.
Was there any, any other, get some emails from somebody? Because I don't have all of them.
Well, I, I don't know, did we read one from Karen Thompson? Did we read that?
I don't know. I don't have anything from Karen Thompson.
And, uh, and I also have, see something here from Christopher Pomeroy, did we read that?
I read that one, yeah.
You already read that?
Yeah, I read that one.
So, we didn't read Karen's?
I don't have anything from Karen.
I think she just sent that to council members, I think she asked, maybe wrong, but I don't think she asked her to be read. Yeah.
I have it. Um, well, I'll just read it real quick, it's short. She's just, uh, expressing her support also. Consistent with the state of Michigan, Oakland County, the city of Detroit, the city of Southfield, and other neighboring communities, I strongly support having the city of Lathir Village honor LGBTQ+ Pride Month each June. This honor would include displaying a pride flag outside of our city hall and adopting a formal proclamation recognizing LGBTQ+ Pride Month every year in June. It is important to me as a resident of our diverse community that the city of Lathir Village publicly recognizes, includes, respects, and celebrates all who choose to live, work, or visit here. And that's from Karen Thompson.
Thank you. Were there any other ones that were missing?
There's one from Kelly Swagler and Bradley Stern. Uh, I am unable to make it in person to the next council meeting, city council meeting, but please read my comments below, allowed during the appropriate public comment portion. As a resident of Lathir Village, I believe it is important for our community to foster a welcoming and affirming environment for everyone. I feel we should formally recognize Pride Month in celebration of our LGBTQ+ residents, their contributions, and the values of inclusion and equality that make our city stronger. I encourage the city council to consider ways we can visibly and meaningfully celebrate Pride Month, such as by enacting a formal proclamation and flying a pride flag outside city hall. Doing so will not only reinforce our city's commitment to diversity, but also create a sense of belonging for many residents. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Any one else?
Uh, Mary Lou Resnick sent us an email, sent me an email, sorry.
12 tactics behind...
Uh, dear Lathir Village City Council, writing to ask you to take two simple but meaningful steps that would show love and support for the many LGBTQ+ people who live, work, and visit our city. Adopt a formal annual proclamation recognizing June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in Lathir Village. Display a pride flag outside of city hall each June as a visible symbol of inclusion and support. By doing this, we will be joining the state of Michigan, Oakland County, city of Detroit, Southfield, and so many of our neighboring communities who already take these steps proudly. Lathir Village has always been known as a diverse, welcoming, and supportive city. This is a chance to live those values out loud. It's a way to send a clear message that Lathir is a place where everyone belongs regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. This isn't about politics, it's about people. We all have neighbors, friends, and family members in the LGBTQ+ community, and we want them to know they are seen, valued, and safe here. Let's be a city that leads with love and kindness. Let's make sure our city reflects the hearts of the people who live in it. Sincerely, Mary Lou Resnick. I think that's the last one I have.
Okay, um, now, someone will make a motion for the consent agenda?
Uh, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda with, uh, modification, uh, and pulling the meeting minutes from the May 19th regular meeting. Second.
Moved in second, um, go ahead, and we do the roll call, yeah, oh yeah, roll call, sorry.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Manarino Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tom Cantor?
Yes.
It has been accepted. What is it?
So, for the May 19th minutes, page 15 of the packet, uh, second paragraph, it talks about the, um, language for the, uh, heavily override ballot initiative. I know that it was confusing when we were talking about it, we went back and forth, but it's, it's restoring two 20-mills and restoring two 3-mills. Uh, we're not restoring 20-mills, so we need to put the word two in, in the minutes there.
That's it?
Yeah.
Jason, do you have anything?
No, I do not.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the May 19th minutes.
Second.
It's been moved in second, uh, any further discussion? I don't think there is. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tom Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Manarino Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. I think we might have messed up the one. So, the sacra, the sacra and the sacua.
No, we determined that was supposed to be in the consent agenda.
Okay, that's what I did, okay, good, thank you. Uh, so moving on to action requests. First is the request to approve the fiscal year 2024-25 budget amendments.
Thank you, Mayor. As we discussed during the study session, uh, city council approves budget amendments at least twice a year, and since we are a regular meeting in June, this is typically when we are second, budget amendments. Uh, overall, I think the city had a good fiscal year, all things considered. Uh, the general fund, as council is aware, when it was originally approved, we were looking to net about $12,000 in the general fund. After all things considered, we are still looking to be positive and add $3,000 to general fund. This does include all the additional, or additional accounting services that we needed on top of the $70,000 patrol vehicle purchase that we had to make unexpectedly. Uh, as for the other funds, they did have planned expenses and dipped into the fund balance, so major roads will go into the fund balance a little bit as we accomplished our eastbound 11-mile project while keeping the $100,000 transfer to local roads so we can take on projects this current, this upcoming fiscal year. Uh, DDA will be dipping into the fund balance planned as they finish out the Hawk Signal project and the major alley reconstruction. Um, and then, the water sewer on paper, it does look like it's taking massive hit, but this is due to the county finally billing us and, well, completing and then billing us the work for the sanitary retention tank, and then the approved engineering for our major Southfield Road water main project. Since we are mid-month, we are still monitoring bills. Uh, overall, we are confident with where it stands right now. However, if it does come that a bill comes in unexpectedly, we may need to call a special meeting and do one final budget amendment for the year. But as of right now, we are pretty confident and happy where the city stands.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal, uh, 24-25 budget amendments?
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
I just want to congratulate Mike and his team on doing an excellent job of managing expenses, especially, uh, in light of some of the unexpected expenses that we had and still ending up that we're, we're growing the, um, general fund, not by a lot, but it's, it's better than going, going the other way. Also, um, the other nice thing too, uh, is that all of our fund balances are healthy. Um, you know, Mike indicated that we took a, a, a big hit in water and sewer, that was planned, those were approved expenses. Uh, I think we still have about seven some odd million, 7 point some odd million dollars in the, um, uh, in, in that fund, the major road fund, uh, as well as the local road fund are, are well positioned for the upcoming projects. Um, and so again, so, thanks, Mike.
Anyone else? Hearing none, a roll call, please.
Councilmember Manarino Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tom Cantor?
Yes.
Uh, motion passes. Next, we have the request to approve assessing services contract.
Thank you, Mayor. So, we did talk about this our last study session, as councils where Oakland County decided to substantially raise assessing rates to all their, uh, partner communities uh, very recently. So, unfortunately, they did it, really, we were in the midst of budget season right before we were about to approve the budget. Uh, so, staff, we took a step of issuing an RFP to see if we could get any other entities to bid on our proposal. Uh, the city of Southfield was the only other, um, assessing service that was willing to take us on as a client. Uh, after discussing at our study session, staff continued conversations with the city of Southfield, and we are confident they can take us on and handle our assessing duties. Um, so, we are looking for approval for a three-year contract with the city of Southfield. Uh, by issuing, entering into a contract with us based on what Oakland County was proposing as rates versus city of Southfield, uh, they will save us roughly, I believe I put in there, $50,000 over that three-year life, um, so we do think it's a good deal for us.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed three-year assessment contract with the city of Southfield for a three-year cost of $150,000, pending final city attorney review.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, during the study session, last study session, when we discussed this, um, there were some questions asked about the, uh, experience and skill of, uh, Southfield and whether they had the staff and resources to provide the support that we need. Uh, I know the Oakland County proposal, you know, they have a lot more people that work in the county, but, uh, they provide services that generally we don't utilize, uh, as part of our assessment services. So, it seems like Southfield is, uh, they have the bandwidth to support us. Um, the cost of the proposal is, is, uh, more advantageous to the city. Uh, it seems, uh, I have no concerns about their ability to, to come through on this contract that they proposed to us.
Anyone else?
I was just gonna say, I think it's a great thing that they're only, they're keeping their rate, a flat rate of $50,000, like, the contract won't increase over that period of time, so I think that's also a good thing as well, so, just wanted to highlight that.
Anything else?
Well, and just so we're clear, the county of Oakland, it didn't just pick on us.
Right.
County of Oakland is doing this to a lot of communities, and, uh, so, I, I don't know what they think they're gonna gain, but they're gonna lose a lot of communities who are gonna go elsewhere, and so, we are fortunate to have the opportunity to have Southfield, uh, provide the service for us, so, thank you.
A lot of scrambling going on right now.
Any else? Hearing none, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Manarino Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tom Cantor?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is the request to approve fire protection services contract extension.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the next two kind of go together, but the first one is up is fire extension. So, both the city's contracts with city of Southfield for fire protection and dispatch both expire at the end of June. Um, so, having conversations with city of Southfield, we are looking for an extension. Southfield is willing to offer a one-year extension for fire service, uh, for a cost of $754,721. Uh, with this extension, they did want to see the city continue to improve its water system so, uh, so we can handle their fire service, and you'll see that in the agreement. Couple of items we have already accomplished this year, which included the 900 linear feet of water main and opening up 12-mile meter. So, really, the big thing for this next year is doing one of the big grant projects on Southfield Road. So, that, that will be the first item up for consideration.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the city of Southfield, city of Southfield and city of Lathir Village fire con, protection services contract extension for a one-year cost of $754,721.90.
Second.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion?
So, the contract is asking, assigning some responsibilities to the Lathir Village, as Mike just mentioned. Um, I guess my question is for the city attorney, so, if something happens, we have some huge, uh, impact on the budget that prevents us from being able to meet these, uh, obligations in the timeline specified in this proposal, what's our exposure?
Well, worst-case scenario, we lose our fire service protection. Um, I think, you know, based on our prior relationship with the city of Southfield, this isn't the first time that they've required that we put, uh, what are called progress goals into our, into our agreement. Um, I, I don't anticipate that it would come to that, but, you know, they're pretty understandable, I think, for the most part.
The only, the only other thing I would say is that we don't really have much choice at this point, if we want to continue fire protection services.
Right.
Anyone else? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Pro-Tom Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Manarino Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is the request to approve agreement for police and fire dispatch services.
Thank you, Mayor. So, very similar, the city of Southfield handles our dispatch services as they do both police and fire, uh, so they are looking to offer us a one-year contract with an option on, uh, city of Southfield option for an additional year. The first year of this contract will be $66,393. Uh, city staff, we did have informal conversations with a couple of their dispatch units, and their costs are roughly eight, $10,000 per officer. So, for us, the city of Southfield is, it's a really good deal for the services we get. And overall, the, the police on top of it, they're very happy with the service they receive.
Thank you.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the city of Southfield and city of Lathir Village agreement for police and fire dispatch services for a first-year cost of $66,393 and a second-year Southfield option of $69,713.
Thank you.
It's been moved in second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Manarino Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro-Tom Cantor?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. Motion passes. Next is the first reading ordinance, 2025-01, ordinance to amend the city of Lathir Village Code of Ordinances at Chapter 77, urban redevelopment by adding a new article, Article 3 workforce, excuse me, workforce housing pilot to provide for approval of an exemption from add valerium property taxes for housing as authorized by provisions of State Housing Development Authority Act of 1966, Public Act 346 of 1966, as amended, MCL 125.1401.
I can address this one, Madam Mayor. So, this, uh, as has been previously discussed in this meeting and several meetings prior, this ordinance is the framework for allowing the city to entertain and negotiate pilot agreements with specific developers. This agreement, um, is, for the most part, models, um, identically the state law, State Housing Development Authority Act, which provides cities with this tool, um, to entice developers. There are a few notable differences from the state act that have been added specifically There are a few notable differences from the state act that have been added specifically to the, this ordinance. Those are dealing with the fact that this, most of the city's commercial property is located in the Downtown Development Authority. The state act doesn't reference development authorities, but this ordinance specifically gives the city the ability to negotiate, city council the ability to negotiate with the Downtown Development Authority for a different allocation of the funds than would otherwise be allocated under the DDA's TIF plan. Additionally, this, this ordinance adds a public hearing requirement. Prior to city council approving any agreement with any developer, city council is required to hold a public hearing. That was something that was included at the request, mostly of the, of the residents requesting trans, additional transparency. Additionally, this ordinance adds a specific, a minimum amount because the ordinance is, or the individual pilot agreements will, the amount that's, the payment amount will be calculated based on occupancy. However, we did add a provision in here that allows the agreement to contain a minimum annual payment. So if the, initially, we anticipated that in the initial construction phase and, and early occupancy phase where it's not built out, that there would be a minimum amount that the city would still collect as, as the payment in lieu of the AD Valarium tax payment. So any questions?
Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh one, an ordinance to amend the city of Letherton Village Code of Ordinances at chapter seventy-seven, urban redevelopment by adding a new article, Article Three, Workforce Housing Pilot to provide for approval of an exemption from AD Valarium property taxes for housing as authorized by provisions of the State Housing Development Authority Act of nineteen sixty-six, Public Act three forty-six of nineteen sixty-six as amended and scheduled a second reading for July twenty-one, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
I've got a few things, and I'll try to answer some of the questions that were brought up during, during public comment. There were a couple of comments, two maybe three comments about why are you doing a, a headley on the upcoming election as well as a Public Act thirty-three while giving a, a developer a break? Now, first of all, we're, we don't know that we're giving a developer a break. I mean, more than likely, if this ordinance is, is passed, the, the proposed development of the, the school will follow through. But there's no guarantee that that will, will be approved. As to why we're doing a, a Public Act thirty-three and a headley as, as well as giving a break, those are independent concepts, I guess, for lack of a better word. We're doing a headley PA thirty-three because we have a revenue problem. We're giving, potentially giving a, a break to a developer through a pilot program to encourage that development to happen. Right now, and this will answer another one of the questions, we're getting twenty-three thousand dollars in revenue from that property. This is, this, this ordinance would add a tool that we could potentially use with, with this developer to dramatically increase that. There was a question about, for that particular project, forecasted payments. Based on what they've said for, for their rent and the number of units, the city would garner roughly around two hundred and seventy-eight, eight thousand dollars versus, I think, what was it? I don't, I went, meant to look up the number, that it's about six hundred thousand dollars.
So the estimated tax revenue, this was an estimate based on taxable value that was established by Oakland County. Estimated property taxes would be six hundred, six hundred and seventy thousand dollars. But this is between all units, so the, captured by the DDA would be three hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Right.
So that's, if I can clarify this, we always talk about twenty thousand. That's their total tax bill right now. So only ten thousand of that's kept by the city.
Right, right. So I'm, I'm talking total, total amount. So, so you're talking six hundred and seventy thousand dollars versus, versus two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars, and you're talking nothing if the developer doesn't go through with this project. So as Jason said earlier or in the study session, you know, this, this is a tool to, to encourage, encourage development. So they, they, they are two separate concepts. You know, this will get us revenue. This will get us potentially twelve times the revenue that we're getting right now. You know, if, if a pilot ordinance is approved and successfully negotiated with the potential developer. In terms of the question about the occupancy rate, yes, it is, it, it is based on occupancy rate. But one of the things that we talked about, and Scott mentioned a minute ago, was putting in a minimum. Because again, if this project, I don't believe that this, this project, if it happens, will, will be a failure. But if it is a failure, we don't wanna be left holding the bag, so to speak. So we did put something into the ordinance to, to allow a minimum. As far as the question about limits go, the, the definition of workforce housing is, is up to a hundred and twenty percent. I know on the lower end, depending on the funding, the, the funding entity, there, there obviously is a lower end. We all are aware of that, but it, it can differ for different entities. So for example, the county, if they get money from the county, the county's lower end is eighty percent. So it's eighty percent to a hundred and twenty percent. And what that means is that a certain number of rents will be required to be targeted towards people who are in that entire range. And it is based on the, the AMI of, of the area, which is, I think we said was roughly around a hundred thousand dollars. Yeah, I think it was actually more than that.
More than that.
Yeah. So, so, so a hundred and twenty percent of that is a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, you know, so, and then whatever that lower end range.
The ordinance also states a definition for area median income because during public comment, there was a question from Carol about.
Yes, there you go, Jason, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'll speak up. Carol, you had asked a question during public comment about the definition of what area median income means. And in this draft ordinance, the definition is, area median income shall mean the midpoint of the Detroit, Warren, Livonia, Michigan, HUD Housing and Urban Development, Metro, FMR, fair market rent areas. Household income distribution is calculated by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And I'll ask city attorney, but my understanding is that that definition is similar definition to what other communities that have pilot ordinances utilize. Not exactly the same, but it's similar.
That is, so that definition was added at the request of council to clarify and specify what the area median income was. So when I went and searched what metric they used to calculate that, that's the agency, the federal agency that determines that rate, and that's what the state uses, other communities use. It's just not defined to that extent at the state level, but that's where they get the information from.
So, but this is what we're calling in our ordinance, the definition of area median income. That's where we're gonna derive that number from.
Yeah. And then regarding why, why isn't this being voted on? For, for starters, you know, I think everybody knows we've got a representative government. The residents vote for this, this council, and this council is, is brought to be to, to make these, these kinds of decisions. Kelly and I looked earlier this afternoon, and of all the other pilot ordinances that we've, we've found in the state, we weren't able to find any that were actually voted on by residents. They were enacted by councils, unless you know of one. Well, no, to that point, if, if you look at the city charter, chapter seven specifically addresses how legislation can be initiated. And unless city council, there's no provision that allows the city council to, to, on their own, submit a proposed ordinance to the electorate. So the only, the only mechanism under the charter for that to happen is the city, city council receives a signed petition from the electorate to either repeal or enact an ordinance. Then they can choose to adopt that ordinance or repeal that ordinance that's subject to the petition, or they can make the determination to submit it to the, the electors at the next general election. So there actually isn't a mechanism for council to just take any ordinance that they choose and put it before the, before the voters. Yeah, thanks.
So to be, so to be clear, residents would have to initiate a petition
Correct.
in order to propose ordinance language that the council would consider to either adopt, appeal, repeal, or put on a ballot.
Yeah, correct. So it's either initiatory or referendum petition. It has to be signed by ten percent of the registered elector, registered electors of the city the last general election, which we just talked about in the study session. I think it's a little over forty-one hundred?
One thousand thirty-six.
Okay. And that has to, that would, that petition would have to be submitted by the deadline for inclusion of ballot proposals on, on the general ballot, which I don't have off the top of my head. I think it's August, mid-August, like second week of August. And the, the one other thing I'd say, say is, you know, you know, if, if this development were to be something else, if this were to be a rec center or a community center, I guarantee you, we wouldn't be having this conversation about whether or not it was voted on, so.
One thing, I did talk to, I asked her now about the minimum amount you need to make. So there will be like an application process. So there's only, you know, there's a cap to how much you can make to get approved and qualified to live in the apartment building. So, you know, typically, I think they, during the planning meeting, they showed how much you probably need to make, and it's like, in the like sixty-five thousand dollar range and up to the, the one-twenty. So I wouldn't say anything lower than pretty much like the sixties or something like that. So I did check with them. So there is an application process and everything to get qualified.
And, and they're only required to have a certain number at, at those levels.
Not the entire development.
Not the entire development. And I think it was also worth noting what, what Scott mentioned a little bit earlier. You know, we did specifically put a, a public hearing in the ordinance so that if and when a developer wants to enter into a pilot with us, again, the residents have a, a chance to express their, their opinions on what the specifics are of, of that potential arrangement.
Anything else? Roll call please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Manarino Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes. Motion passes. Next, we have the first reading ordinance twenty twenty-five oh two, an ordinance to amend the city of Letherton Village Code of Ordinances at chapter twenty-two, elections by amending section twenty-two dash one, division of city into precincts.
I can introduce this one as well, Madam Mayor. So the, currently, the city charter grants the city council the ability to, by ordinance, set the number of voting precincts in the city. And I'll let clerk expand on this, but it has been proposed that the city consolidate their two precincts based on recent changes to Michigan election law, which allows up to four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine electors per precinct. So the, in order to do that, under state, under state election law, it requires the city election commission to, by resolution, consolidate. However, as mentioned, because the city has an ordinance which establishes the number of precincts, does require an amendment to that ordinance. So proposed tonight is first reading of an amendment to the section twenty-two dash one of the city code of ordinances, which would consolidate the current two voting precincts into one. I don't know if you wanted to add anything about the cost savings or motivations?
Again, it should save us on having one precinct because we will not have to buy equipment for two, which we are going to need to do in the fiscal year twenty twenty-six, is buy new equipment, and it should also save us on labor. And it should accommodate the voters because of the fact that so many people now do early in-person voting as well as absentee voting. And we're still going to the same location. We can still have out a number of booths and a number of people to pass out the applications to vote as people come in. So the traffic flow should go well in a nice U shape.
And what was the potential savings you said earlier in the study session?
They told us at a meeting at the end of May, May twenty-first, to have fifteen thousand per precinct in our fiscal year budget. So if we go down to one precinct, that should save that as well as the, the, the workers, the election inspectors on that quote-unquote election day.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call. Do we, go ahead.
Did we make the motion?
No.
I will make the motion. To conditionally approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh two, an ordinance to amend the city of Letherton Village Code of Ordinances by amending section twenty-two dash one, division of city into precincts, and schedule a second reading during a special meeting on a to-be-determined date. I don't think we've chosen one.
So this is something for you guys to do now, since we do have to have this done before then in June so we can get it turned into the state. Since we are scheduled to have a town hall as of right now, next Monday, the recommendation would be initially next Monday, June twenty-third, and probably five-thirty, six o'clock, whatever works for the majority of council.
Okay. So let me start over, so it's clear. Make a motion to conditionally approve the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash oh two, an ordinance to amend the city of Letherton Village Code of Ordinances by amending section twenty-two dash one, division of city into precincts, and schedule a second reading during a special meeting on June twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, pending formal approval of the election commission.
Is there a second? It's moved to second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Manarino Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the request to approve resolution twenty twenty-five fifteen establishing charter amendment ballot proposal language.
Can I introduce this one as well, Madam Mayor? So this is in, in response to the amendments to Michigan election law, again, that allow for early voting as well as for the ability for overseas service members to vote and have their votes counted even if they're not receiving until after election day. What, what this has resulted in is delayed certification times for, for election results. So as a result of that, there are three separate sections of the city charter that need to be amended to allow for these change, or to be consistent with these changes to the state election law. And this proposal, which unlike an ordinance, amendments to the city charter have to be submitted to the electorate for approval. So this proposal aims to amend three sections, as I stated, of the city charter, specifically with respect to the term and commencement of the term of elected officials, as opposed to the term beginning at eight P.M. on the Monday following a regular election or, or general election. This would take effect upon certification of the election results. So that could either be earlier, that could be later. The oath of office, same thing. It would, previously, council members or elected officials were required to take their oath of office within ten days from the date of the election. This would be on the date of the first regular meeting following the election, that they would take that oath of office. And then lastly, it would amend the requirement to hold an organizational meeting the Monday following each regular city election to the first regular meeting following each regular city election.
Thank you.
Motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash fifteen establishing charter amendment ballot proposal language to be placed on the November twenty twenty-five ballot.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, so just to be clear, this is essentially a language that will allow our charter to be in alignment with state election law and for the process that we use to seat a new council after an election to also occur in consistently with state election law and, and an election certification process and deadline.
That's correct. Because under, under the, under the current wording of the city charter, is possible that election results may not be certified by the county clerk prior to the dates required for elected officials to take, begin their term of office or take their oath of office, or for the city to conduct an organizational meeting. So this eliminates that potential conflict and allows for, I guess, as previously stated, all those additional voting opportunities to be counted.
And, and also, just to be clear, so we're pretty quick, our clerk, clerk is very quick in certifying our elections at the city level, but then it still has to go to the county, which is certifying the elections of all the different cities
Correct.
and the county, if there's a county-wide election as well. So we just have no control over it, and we have, no, we can't confirm when the timing will occur.
Correct.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Manarino Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the request to appoint a planning commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. So due to recent resignation on the planning commission, the city has been soliciting applicants to fill our one vacancy and including in your pack are the two applications received this last go-round.
Thank you. And it's supposed to be a recommendation from me, and so I recommend Joe Robinson to take the, the spot until, to August twenty twenty-six, I believe.
I'll make a motion to appoint Joe Robinson to the planning commission for a term expiring August thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I think both of the, the applicants were highly qualified, although I think Joe Robinson had a little more applicable experience. And, and she served on the committee that I chaired, which was the infrastructure committee, and she did fabulous work there for three years, which also, I think, will, will transfer over to her work in the, the planning commission.
I'm glad we're starting to see so many people put in applications and be involved. So best of luck to our appointed planning commissioner.
Any further, did we do the motion board? Yes, we did. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Manarino Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is a quest to appoint an election commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Due to Mayor Protem Cantor being up for election, our charter calls out who serves in our election commission. It is the city attorney, city clerk, and then one member of city council. So due to him being in election, it's recommended that we change this for this upcoming cycle. So we're looking for a new member of city council serving the election commission.
Thank you. Who likes to make a motion?
Motion to appoint Maria Manarino Thompson.
Second.
Second.
To the election commission.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none?
Honor to serve.
What are you sitting in? Nothing. Nothing. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Manarino Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Cantor, or Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Maria. And then, Jay was added for the temporary sign ordinance.
Do you want to go straight to the motion, or?
Yeah, so I actually was able to prepare a resolution. I can read it.
Okay.
At a regular meeting of the city council, the City of Lathir Village, Oakland County, Michigan, held the 16th day of June, 2025, the following preamble resolution were offered. Whereas the City of Lathir Village is currently experiencing lane closures, changing traffic patterns, and road closures as part of the ongoing I-696 and 11 Mile Road construction project, whereas the City of Lathir Village recognizes the potential impact this construction project is having on local businesses, and whereas the City of Lathir Village desires to limit the potential impact the ongoing construction project is having on local businesses, now therefore be resolved as follows. The City of Lathir Village City Council hereby determines that it's in the best interest of the local businesses of the city, at Section 52.28.E of the city sign ordinance, which prohibits feather and flutter signs be temporarily suspended during the construction project. On page two. Additionally, the enforcement of Section, I put it down wrong here, 52-28E shall be suspended for the commercial properties located adjacent to Southfield Road between Margate and 11 Mile Road until the completion of the current construction project, or August 31st, 2025, whichever occurs first.
And I think we need to, we discussed putting in there, for retail businesses, only one sign per retail business.
Yep, I'll add that in.
So, I'll make a motion to approve the temporary sign resolution.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Manarino Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cantor?
Yes.
Motion passes. City administrator report.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. City attorney.
Nothing for me tonight.
Scott, did you want to talk about the?
Oh, you're right. Yes, I'm sorry. So, there was, it was brought up to me, and not to pick on the clerk, but the clerk is part of the election packet that was sent, or was made available to individuals interested in running for city council at this election. There was, the dates of the term, term beginning and term ending were on there. Those dates would be accurate if the proposal that has just been voted on to go to the ballot is approved. However, these dates would be, under the current reading of the ordinance, would be one week prior. So, instead of term beginning 11/17, it would be term beginning 11/10/2025, term ending 11/12 of 2029, as opposed to 11/19 of 2029. And that's for the two highest vote getters. The third highest vote getters' term would begin on 11/10 of 2025, and would conclude on 11/15 of 2027.
Thank you. Reports of boards, commissions, and committees, DDA? No, nothing. Planning commissioner?
The planning commission has a meeting tomorrow night, our June meeting, and on the agenda, our discussion of a zoning amendment for solar panels and battery storage for solar panels is something that our DDA and economic development team has been working on, and has been presented to the planning commission at a previous meet, at our May meeting, and has been discussed. So, this will be continued work on that. We also have two items for new business, both zoning amendments. One is a first reading of a draft zoning amendment addressing the money service business use classifications, which would include language that would kind of control where in the city money service businesses, which are like same-day check cashing type businesses, where they could actually operate inside the city. And the second one is a first reading of a zoning amendment related to small box retail discount stores, so that'd be like Dollar General, Dollar Store-type businesses with a similar intention to just define where and how in the city businesses of this type are able to operate. That's what's going to happen in tomorrow's agenda.
Parks and Rec?
Yeah, so we, at our last meeting, we talked about potentially making some improvements at Surakewood Park and working with the Tree Committee, the Nature Group, and the Women's Club. It's a kind of a cross-group effort. Our next food truck Friday will be Friday, June 27th, with El Flaco Tacos. Reminder, at the Lathir Music Festival on September 13th, we'll have the Kid Zone with face painters, balloonists, and an obstacle course. We did add a trivia night just recently to the calendar for September 26th. Puzzle Night is still scheduled for October 8th, and that's puzzle competition, so it's a jigsaw puzzle, not other kinds of puzzles. So, that should be fun, and especially for all those out there that are competitive. And then, the Road Rally is October 12th. And then, last Friday, we had the End of School Bash and Food Truck, which, again, was a lot of fun, so.
Thank you. I was trying to find something for the Tree Committee. I'm not, I think they have a meeting tomorrow, if I'm not mistaken. Thank you. Finance review committee?
Yeah, so, we just recently updated the next set of town halls that'll be closer to the election on the website, so you can go and click on the main page, the Headley Initiative button, and it will take you to that information. The next one is August 12th at 7:00 PM, and there are also, just, there's a wealth of information on the website if you're eager to get a jumpstart and learn more about it.
Southfield School Board?
I did have the pleasure of attending both high schools' graduation this past week. It was June 6th. It was greatly attended. I was very happy to shake each and every one of the students' hands. So, Dr. Green, our superintendent, and the university head dean of the university, Sakina Bolden, asked me to share some highlights. So, let me see, there were 10 scholars who were awarded for taking eight or more AP courses during their high school years. There were 10 students who were recognized for AP honors awards, receiving a three or higher on three or more AP exams. And then, we had, there was like a highlight of one student. Her name is Mary. She received acceptance to five Ivy League schools, and she received $5 million in scholarships by herself. So, she's going to be attending Yale in the fall on the full ride. So, it was, it was an amazing experience, awesome to see all the students thrive, so it was just great, and I'm glad to be able to continue to work with Southfield Public Schools.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any unfinished or new business? Public comments? Speakers are limited to three minutes. Come to the podium.
Here again. Good evening, Council. Tim Hillman, Santa Quentin Drive. First and foremost, I want to speak in support of the precinct consolidation. I think it sounds like a budget saver and a good idea. I would ask you to be considerate of one factor that I don't think was discussed tonight, and that is how that might impact our precinct delegates, Kim Hodge in particular. Our precinct two delegate is especially good and active and leaderly, and I would hate for the consolidation to negatively impact her position as our precinct delegate, which is an elected position. Secondly, when Chuck and I floated around the idea of advocating for Pride Month in Lathir Village, I knew that we would receive a lot of support because this community is very supportive. I was not expecting to receive as much support as we did. I was quite moved by that. So, thank you, thank you, thank you to the residents that contributed their voices. Samantha, you are one hell of a talker. Thank you for that. And also, thank you to council for making this year the first year we formally recognize Pride and Juneteenth. Those are great things. Last but not least, on the same topic, a young man, Antonio Alarcón, was sitting here earlier today, but he had to leave, and he had a letter that he would like me to read. I'll keep it quick. Dear city council, I'm writing to advocate for the formal recognition of Pride Month and the annual display of the pride flag at city hall during the month of June. As someone who has lived here for over five years, I remember driving through the neighborhood before moving in and seeing a pride flag displayed. It made me feel welcome and affirmed in my decision to make this city my home. In these times, when it feels like our community is being suppressed, it's crucial for our city to be the beacon of inclusivity. Displaying the pride flag sends a message that we see everyone, we value everyone, and everyone belongs here. I've been so glad to see the outpouring of support from allies in our city, and this is a chance to show them that their support is valued, and that the LGBTQ+ community is recognized and cared for. As a member of the community, I feel safer displaying my own pride flag at home when I know the city supports inclusivity, and I'm sure that reflects the feelings of the majority of my neighbors. Since moving here, I've been welcomed and treated kindly by many neighbors, and that speaks volumes about the value of creating an inclusive environment. Displaying the pride flag is a way to show that we are here to support everyone and to make everyone feel safe and comfortable, because right now, for many minorities, sadly, safety has become a luxury, and its assurance is more important than ever. Thank you, Antonio Alarcón. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Will Fobbs, Lathir Boulevard. I want to actually just do a real quick message. I was on planning commission, and I was the spot that they're filling, and I wanted to just personally, I feel real bad. I was real sick, down to 115 pounds, and six months, 115 is not good. And I'm doing better now, different medicines, et cetera. But I actually talked to a couple of different council members, and I wanted to actually say it publicly to my community, that taking responsibility for your duty is a big thing. So, I had a conversation with them about it's time for me to go. And so, I got a little letter, and I was like, I meant to do it earlier, but I wanted to thank you for all the years that I got to actually do that through COVID, et cetera. And I'm really excited about future of the candidates, et cetera, but wanted to actually apologize to the community, because I take fiduciary responsibility very seriously, and I was not able to do that. So, at some point, you got to say, I'm not coming back, and you have to actually make the right decision. So, thank you all for your patience with me as I kind of went through that.
Thank you all.
Don Ixted. That current school building proposal is ugly. We all know it, you can all see it. The exterior does not match the, or harmonize with the historic school buildings. So, who's responsible to ensure that no ugly buildings get built in Lathir Village? I don't, we don't want to come back in 30 years and still have that ugly building sitting there. Item two. I suggest that the developer add a second and third floor to the central building, and then fill the school with many apartments. Then developers should build twoplexes and two-story condos on the rest of the property. And how do we keep this housing in this school building? How do we keep it from being low income? Because that's not the intent, and that's not why we, some of us moved here. Thank you.
Lauren Garis, again. I like the look of the school, or the new building. I just thought I'd throw that in there. But I'm actually up here about Maria's chair. Why are you sitting so low, Maria? Is this what temporary council people have to endure? I just wonder. I think that we should have inclusivity with council members as well.
Thank you. And FYI, this is the chair I chose. I don't know if you know this, but I'm really short, and I do not like not being able to have my feet on the ground. So, that other chair is way too high for me, and I feel like a little kid with my feet, you know, swinging. So, I choose this chair because it's adjustable, and I can put my feet on the ground. And at my age, I can do whatever I want.
Carol Green, Lathir Boulevard. This is kind of follow-up to something that was talked about earlier, but talk of the CERNOW development plan began last year. As there was more and more discussion about the development, a few residents who were paying attention felt that the entire community needed to be made aware of the plan. To this end, residents asked for the city to hold a town hall meeting. When the request was declined, the residents organized and self-funded the cost of renting the community room from the city, and held a town hall meeting in mid-January of 2025. At the January city council meeting, Mayor Garrett said, quote-unquote, "She was excited that everyone got together at that town hall to discuss things," end of quote. But then she felt that doing so was premature. She encouraged us to remember that the city does not own the property, and therefore, quote, "We only have control over the ordinances, and if it doesn't sound right, then we're not going to vote yes for it," end of quote. Then she added, again, quote, "Absolutely, there will be a town hall when we get there," end of quote. This was again addressed at subsequent council meetings, with the question being raised of when would be the right time to have a town hall meeting? That question was not answered. And respectfully, may your comment tonight that the business town hall was to satisfy that request, I think is, I don't know, out in left field somewhere. Very disappointing. Anyway, here we are, five months later. Lathir Village faces the biggest development, save for Michigan first, in its history. Still, no town hall meeting. Yes, this development has been discussed in many meetings in which residents have access, but let's face it, many are not paying attention. In the meantime, ordinances have been adopted and adapted to suit the requests of the developer and the plans approved by the planning commission, all without a push to reach out to the community. I believe that with the magnitude of this project, the council should be taking the pulse of the residents before making any decisions in voting. I respectfully and earnestly ask that a well-publicized and long-overdue town hall meeting be held prior to taking a vote on the pilot ordinance. So, I'm happy to hear that there is one being planned. It's a little disappointing that there's not more notice, but I hope that the city will do everything they can to publicize that. Jalen, to follow up on what you said in terms of talking to CERNOW, you know, he can tell us anything he wants to say about what he's planning, but if, you know, we all know, if it's not in writing, you know, it's not enforceable. So, I appreciate that little bit of affirmation, but I don't know that it holds its weight in water. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, it's late, so I won't say all I'm going to, and I want to reiterate what the previous speaker has said. Over the last decade, I've watched as the beautiful Southfield Road has been trashed. Low-quality type businesses have come in. We're talking about Dollar Generals, we're talking about check cashing. There's been two attempts to try and bring marijuana in, and the kind of things that were here that would draw upper-middle-class people to the area are just missing. I've pointed out in the past how those historic businesses, buildings, are being trashed by slum landlords because there's no council enforcement of code. And of course, now, this CERNOW development, we know from Daddy CERNOW, because as I've said many times, when he trashed the city hall, he promised on a stack of bibles what he produced would be of equal quality. In other words, a building that could last for hundreds of years, like the one he destroyed. Yet, within a short time, the columns started coming apart on the Kinko's Building and so forth. He doesn't deliver the goods, and I don't trust his son either. The reality is, he's talking about apartments, but not one member of council has produced one scaric of proof that there is a need for this. We need low-income housing, but this is not the neighborhood to do that. I've said before, but nobody bothers to take it up. Go through the suburbs, and there's just a glut of apartments. And we're going ahead, trashing the school, taking away the parkland that was surrounding the school, turning it into concrete so it's anti-environmental, and we're doing it without one scaric of evidence that there is a need for this, other than the council wants money. The reality is that if you look at what CERNOW is proposing to charge... The reality is that if you look at what Cernow's proposing to charge, fifteen, sixteen hundred, as of today, the average cost for an apartment, a two-bedroom one, in Birmingham's $3,000, Beverly Hills, it's $1,800, Royal Oak, it's 1723, Berkeley, it's 1970. Those are a bit more upmarket rates than what he's talking about, and I would not be very happy to be told that the school has been basically trashed, because it is what he's proposing. You get all these apartments, and they end up being largely vacant. Then what do you do with that white elephant? You've destroyed the historic district, you've destroyed our most important building, you've privatized what was public parkland, and what have you done it for? Empty promises for a man whose father was full of empty promises. The reality is, I agree. Anything this big and important, right from the start, should have had a town meeting, and that doesn't mean the internet. It means you send things out by mail. People don't necessarily look online. The average person doesn't avidly read council minutes. Something this important should never, ever, ever have been allowed to go ahead without a proper public meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to be heard?
Samantha Davis, California Drive. A question that I have is, where is the place for low-income housing? Additionally, this is my first time being here in person. I usually watch the meetings online, but being here in person, I would like to say that I've noticed that the city attorney doesn't have a name on your name placard. I've been looking at everyone else's, and I'm like, what is this man's name?
I think you can change that at any time.
So we've been talking about inclusion and making everybody feel welcome, so it'd be great if we could get you a name on your placard. Thank you.
Anyone else?
We're at mayor and council comments. Funny thing, Ms. Anderson, I actually own quite a few of apartments of rental properties. And so what was sent to me, because it's time to up the rent, is the average of 21 apartments in this area, what that's high-end, what the, the average, the median, the percentile, the 25th percentile and 75th percentile. The average amount for rent in this area for a two-bedroom, one and a half or more-bath rentals within, seen within the last 48 months is $1,534. So it is accurate. The high-end is 1780 for this area.
That's Birmingham.
So this area, so this would be, you know, I'm just gonna, I'm just, I'm just, I'm not going back and forth with you. This is going to be from, or Lather Village or Southfield. So that's the average. This side, so just let you know, this is, so. Also, something that I am very passionate about, because some of you may or may not know, but I'm gonna bring it up, because someone said, if I don't say my story, somebody else will. So when I got elected as, or appointed as mayor, my first week, first week, appointed on a Monday, on that Thursday, my house was spray painted. Never, ever has that ever happened until this person became mayor. Also, that same year, my house was egged, and it was very concerning, because things like that never happen. So then I had to think to myself, what's the, what is changed that someone would feel so comfortable to come to my home and desecrate my home? And it only comes to one thing, right? Because I'm different. And so the conversation we had during the study session, and the reason I'm passion, so passionate about this, this pride discussion, is because I never want anything like that to happen to anyone else, ever. My grandparents are from the South. My mother is from the South, and she's told me things. She was a part of the world when she had to be, had to choose between the white drinking fountain and the black drinking fountain. And if you've seen the difference of them, it's a major difference. One is very clean, one is very disgusting. And so that's how I'm brought up, to respect everybody, no matter what. No matter what. I might not like you, because I just don't like you. It doesn't have anything to do with anything else. So piggybacking to that, it was, and I, and I am not a crier, by far, I'm not, but it's something that hurts me to my core, when I feel like I'm attacked about how people, how I feel about people. And so when I heard about what happened in Minnesota, it really scared me, because I have people that are in my life who love me, who truly love me, that are asking me to buy a gun for my house, because they're afraid, because they've seen how I've been treated since being on this council. And that's, this is not my thing. However, to see what happened in Minnesota, because somebody doesn't like you or like your politics, that's a very scary thing. So I put together a statement and to the council and to community members, that I'm deeply saddened and outraged by the recent acts of violence against elected officials in Minnesota, including the tragic loss of former Speaker Melissa Hortman and the injury of Senator John Hoffman. These horrifying attacks are not only senseless, they are an attack on the values of democracy, public service, and civil discourse. As your mayor, I wanted to reaffirm that violence has no place in our political process or our communities. Public servants, regardless of political affiliations, deserve to do their work without fear for their safety or the safety of their loved ones. To my colleagues on the city council and the citizens of Lather Village, let us stand united in condemning political violence in all its forms. Let us lead with empathy, listen with intention, and continue to build a community rooted in respect, justice, and peace. My heart is with the victims and their families during this time of an unimaginable loss. That's all that I have.
I've got a few things. First off, just Mike, a couple of things that we didn't have time to get to in the study session. One is, in the past, we've had issues with our garbage trucks going down the middle of the road and blocking the road. I ran across that three times in the last week. So I know we've had in the past to remind Trungali that they're supposed to be on one side of the road and not taking up the middle of the road and backing up cars behind it and bikes. The other question I want to ask is just from the rec committee, you know, they're looking at doing some maintenance, or doing some update to Surrackwood Park, but their big concern is the fact that they did this a few years ago, and then there was nobody to hand it off to from, from the city. So I think I emailed you about it and just wondered if you have any thought about how we might, as a city, either through the DPW or, you know, we don't have a rec coordinator anymore, so how we can, we can do that.
Yeah, unfortunately, I didn't have time to sit down with DPS and see if there's something. I know the big thing right now is trees, and we're trying to keep those alive, so we're gonna see if they have the ability, if they have tanker that they can take out. I know Paradise could take it on, it'd be something we would wait till July, naturally, ask them to do that.
Right, or maybe they might just add it on to the, maybe, maybe. Never hurts to ask, right?
Yeah. It can be something. The tricky part, naturally, with that park, it's, it's something we talked about with Park and Rec a year ago, and if the biggest thing, it's the mulch area, it's the weeds. Really, the only way to truly fix this is dig it all out and replay, except it's $10,000, $15,000. So we'll have to explore some potentially other options. Yeah, I'll chat with DPS and see if we can come up with some sort of plan.
And then just some comments, some general comments. First off, I want to thank all the people who came up and made some truly heartfelt and just brave comments that took a lot of courage. You know, I was quite moved by them, and if you, for those of you that know my wife, she tells me every day that I'm dead inside, so. If you're, if you're moving me, it really did, did make an impact, and I, and I appreciate all the comments that were made tonight with respect to Pride Month. One semi-codolences out to the family of a longtime resident, Don McGee, who passed recently. I had just talked to him about, I think it was about a month ago, and he wasn't doing great, but he was in good spirits, and it was just sad to hear that he, that he passed. Want to congratulate the nature group on an excellent garden tour. It was awesome, just like it was two years ago. Congratulate, we ended a proclamation, but congratulate the, the tree committee for securing 50 trees and getting, what was it, 30 volunteers to, to plant them all in one day, which, which was great. Residents may also notice some sidewalks being worked on. Katie is doing some of their warranty work, so if you, if you see that, that's, that's what that's all about. Also want to thank Will Fobbs. I served on the Planning Commission with Will for, for many years. Excellent, excellent, excellent planning commissioner, one of the best I've served with, and it was unfortunate that, as he said, he had an illness that, that really prevented him from continuing his role. But just thank you very much, Will, I know he's gone, but thank you for, for all you've done. It looks like she's left, but you know, one of the things I just want to mention, you know, Carol Green, in her public comment, talked about taking the pulse of residents and, and in addition to public comment, public hearings, the, you know, the council comments, public comments that the residents have to influence, you know, any of the ordinances or any of the things that we're doing as council, I do take the pulse of residents. Every single week, I walk a street and knock on, knock on doors. Many of you have seen me knock on your doors to get resident input, so that I know what residents are thinking. I go to all the events, I have office hours, and I can tell you that while there are, just like anything we do, one of the very first things I learned when I was on council was no matter what we do, there's somebody who's gonna hate it. And there are people who don't like this project, the, any Lather School project, but what I can tell you is from talking to residents, it's the minority. Everybody I talk, I shouldn't say everybody, but the majority of the people that I talk to either say things like, "I don't care what you do with it, just do something with that property." They say, "I don't necessarily like, like it, I'd like it to be something else, but I'm glad we're doing something with it." Yeah, we're not gonna get the, the full revenue if we do a pilot program, but we're getting more than we're getting now, which, you know, I think the comment was made by one of the commenters, I think it was maybe Andrea and Burchard, that, you know, we're not even, we wouldn't even get enough to, you know, hire a police officer. That's not true. We could hire with what we would be getting from that project if, if it was, pilot was negotiated based on the ordinance, more than two police officers if we wanted, if we wanted to. So I, I get it's a contentious issue, but you know, for everyone that, that's against it, there are many more that are also for it. So, and I think we forget that, because people who are upset about things or don't like things are the ones who, who come out to voice their opinion more so, more so than others. The other, the other thing I wanted to mention too, when I was talking about the Pride Month, is we did talk, we didn't mention it here tonight, but we did talk about flags in the study session, and I think I can talk for everybody here, I, I don't know, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's anybody on council who doesn't want to fly the, the Pride flag, Juneteenth flag, other flags as well. You know, the, the issue at least that I had is making sure that we do that in a way that, you know, that we have an ordinance that, that describes how we do that. Because one, you know, one of the things we talked about earlier in the study session is what happens when, you know, somebody wants to fly a flag who has a, a goal or an issue that we moderately, vehemently abhor. So what do we do in that situation? So we did decide to talk about it again at the next council meeting, which I know is after Pride Month, but I think as, as council people, while we, at least myself personally, while I completely support Pride Month, I also need to look after the city and make sure that we're not doing anything that's gonna cause us harm and cause us money in terms of lawsuits and things like that. So that's all I had tonight.
Anyone else?
I got a couple of things. So relative to things like policing and resource utilization and the impact that this apartment complex might have on the utilization of those resources in the city, I wanted to note that the city's population peaked in the year 2000, 4,200 residents about, 4,236 residents, and current population as of 2023 is 4,049. So there was a point when the city had enough resources to support 200 more people living in here. So, and I'm sure, you know, with 140-odd units, right, that bound to bring in more than 200 people, but the city is more than capable of supporting.
As well as infrastructure.
The infrastructure, the public safety, the services provided by the city, we can handle an influx of a population increase like this. I wanted to jump, kind of piggyback on what Bruce was saying about being on the Planning Commission with Will Fobbs. His expertise and skill and professionalism and experience was a huge benefit to all the work that we did when I, in the time that I've been with him on the Planning Commission, and he's been sorely missed, it's understandable why he was missed, and I know that he was challenged to come to the decision to step down from the commission. It's not something he wanted to do, but it was something he had to do, but I, I just want to throw, I don't know, by support, my, my thoughts with, and appreciation for the work that he did, and I'm sure, you know, Joe will do a great job filling his seat. Planning Commission will continue to move forward. We've got a great group on the commission, so I'm excited about that, but Will will definitely be missed. The last thing I wanted to say about, about Pride and flying a Pride flag, I personally, unequivocally support flying a Pride flag in the city, but as Bruce mentioned, there's a way to do it, and we're gonna need to go through the hard process of figuring out what's the right way for the city that sends the right message, that acknowledges and supports the voices of people, like many people who made their voices heard today, but also as a procedure to do, to support messages such as Support for Pride in a way that is consistent with the, the culture of our city, what's important to us, protects us from, as a city, from being forced to provide voice to, 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 to voices, as Diane Anderson mentioned, that violate the Constitution, right, that end up becoming speech that really is not protected by the Constitution. So there's a right way to do it, I think we can do it. It doesn't seem like it's gonna happen June 2025, but I'm glad that we're having a conversation about it, because I'm confident that we can find a way to successfully do that in June 2026. The conversation needs to move forward, and I did want to go on and make a point of calling out, Scott, what you had said during our study session, was that you, you're gonna be, you're already in contact with the attorney for the city of Madison Heights, which has an ordinance supporting the flying of a Pride flag, so we're gonna get more information about that from then, and I just, it's important that that go on record in this recorded session.
Anyone else?
Sure. The Hawk Signals, do you know, Mike, because of the traffic, do you know if we're gonna be able to meet that mark, to get that installed?
The two that, yeah, the two that are up now are active and they're usable. Actually, Settles are still technically kind of closed by the county as I get finished some concrete work, but the one on the south side, we are still scheduled to do that work. Unfortunately, it does look like it is going to, it's gonna coincide with the Southfield Bridge, so congestion might be even a little bit more. We are in a timeline via grant funding, so we, we've pushed it as far as we can. I believe we're looking to start that mid to late July, it should run about a month.
Okay. Thank you.
Would there be more jackhammering with that?
Yeah, this one's.
For those of us who live by it.
This one's actually putting in median, so yes. This one will be a lot of work.
Yeah, and then I was gonna say, I think some people were asking about Golden Gate Park and what was going on there, because I asked Mike, and there's some, or the oil company is doing some pipeline maintenance there, so if anyone didn't know, just wanted to put it out there. Lastly, I do feel like the study session did not go the way it should have went, but I won't backtrack, because that's not what I'm about, but I do support the Pride flag. I think I'm glad we're looking to do it in the right way, but I won't backtrack. I'll stand on how the conversation happened, all of those things, but I do want to apologize for how the conversation happened. But if you talk to Mike, anybody, I had, I was all ears about doing it on the phone, so I just want to make sure we're protected and we're doing what you guys elected us to do, so that's it.
Thank you. Is there anything else?
I just have one question, you reminded me of something. What's happening on Golden Gate with that huge trench at the building, building in the public right of way, on Golden Gate Road? On the?
Oh, I think, I think it's exactly what you said. I'm pretty sure the oil companies, that's the maintenance, they're doing other crap like that.
Okay, yeah, because he said Golden Gate Park, so.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, because he said Golden Gate Park, so I didn't know if they were doing something there as well.
If you go, if you drive past Golden Gate, it's like a big old, you know, tractor and everything. Yeah, excavation and everything.
Anybody else? Take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.